Sorry, I was just going through all of the all of the letters I received them at seven o'clock, so I'm sorry. But I just read everybody that was having a problem with the second story, so. We're we're live right now, Leslie?
Yes, that is correct. And for the record, the commission for the commissioners, they did email all the public comments that have been received on the item that we're considering tonight. So please take a moment to review those and make sure you've seen those.
Yes, I I've read the three of them. Do we want to open up the meeting? At least get it open, I think.
Yes, we can go ahead and open the meeting.
Okay. I'd like to open the meeting of Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020 of the planning commission. Roll call, please.
All right, it's going to hurt. I'm unmuting, can't switch. Commissioner Silva.
Here.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Win.
Present.
Commissioner LaMaca.
Present.
Vice Chair Spalletta.
I saw him here.
I didn't hear you, sir. Vice Chair Spalletta. Okay, I see you. And Commissioner Owen.
Present.
And for the record, we have a quorum.
Okay, review of agenda items. If there's any items that have rose after the 72 hour posting deadline, this is the point in the meeting where a vote may be taken to add the item to the agenda, a two to three majority.
No, sir, nothing's come.
Okay, public comment. Members of the public wishing to address the board on matters within the jurisdiction of the city of Seaside, but not on the agenda tonight, may do so during the public comment period for up to two minutes. Public comments on specific agenda items are heard under that item. For the public record, please state your name.
If anyone participating on the webinar would like to make a public comment for items not on the agenda, please use the raise your hand function and I can unmute you to speak. And sorry, if you are participating via the phone and you want to raise your hand, you have to push star nine. Okay, one request to speak. Okay, Galaxy S10, you can unmute yourself, which is star six and make comments for up to two minutes. Galaxy S10, sorry, I don't know what you're, you can unmute yourself using star six. And you can speak for two minutes. You must be, huh? Are you there? I see you're unmuted. Okay, we must be having technical difficulties. We'll try it again in a little while. I apologize. You can always email your comments to cityclerk@ci.seaside.ca.us and I will read them into the record. Okay, Chair, that was the only request to speak.
Okay, very good. Approval of minutes, having seen none on there?
Nope, there were none for consideration today.
Business items. Board of Architecture Review Application Number BAR-20-10 and Use Permit UP20-8 Gary Jones applicant and property owners requesting approval for a residential remodel in addition to the single story, single family resident located at 1289 Vallejo Street in the single family residential RS12 zoning district. Two permit approvals are required for the project. Architectural review approval BAR2010 from a for a 489 square foot first floor addition, which includes a 282 square foot garage addition to accommodate a required second parking space, a 125 square foot deck and a 680 square foot second story addition with 152 square foot deck and use permit approval UTO for the proposed second story deck. Which proposed, I'll let staff take that over. That is a mouthful.
All right, let me pull my presentation up. Bear with me a moment. Good evening, Commissioners. It's a pleasure to be with you again tonight. I am presenting tonight's item. This is architectural review and use permit for a second story addition, which includes a second story deck at 1289 Vallejo Street. Basic background, this property was purchased by the owner Carrie Jones in 2019. The existing house is on a 3,650 foot square square foot lot and is developed with a 652 square foot one story house, which includes a 214 square foot garage. As is always required with secondary additions, bar review is required. The reason that a use permit is needed for this application has to do with the projection of the deck into the rear yard. The city does allow for projections into the rear yard with a use permit. So that is what this is attempting. I'll go into further details as we go along. This is the location of the site. It is up on Vallejo. It is surrounded by residential uses on three sides. Except to the north, it is bounded by a park public open space. This is the existing site plan showing the existing house. They will be removing the existing concrete patio and the existing garage. Those would be replaced. Topography will be a big thing here due to the second story additions. We have the cross section which shows that the existing grade of the higher stories higher residences above Vallejo is at 220 feet and then up on Luzern, you have properties at 224. Our property in question is at 214. So for the second story addition, in accordance with Seaside Municipal Code, architecture review approval is required for the construction of any new second story elements, including decks. This one does include decks. They will be adding a new 400 square foot garage. They'll be adding new floor area to the first floor as well, 264 square feet. And then they're also adding a new second story deck. This is the existing front elevation, very basic, very simple, and then the new proposed with the addition. The addition is going above the garage rather than above the existing house. Here we have our first floor plan. On the left over here, you have the existing main house area. This is staying. There will be changes to the roof line, but there's no actual changes to the square footage of the existing main main residence. On the right, you can see the addition of a laundry room and office. There is also a deck that goes off of the first story. This is consistent with our setback requirements. We are also adding a two car garage. The stairs to the second floor goes into the garage. As you can see, there's a garage section which shows that a car can still fit underneath the risers of the stairs. The second floor will consist of the kitchen, living and dining room area with the bedrooms down below. And then we have our view of the second story deck, which is proposed to go onto the rear step back facing west. We're gonna start with our north elevation. This is looking from Durant Park. Those, this is a whole new looking facade. This is all new construction. This will be the garage over on the left and the office here to the right up above. You'll have the open concept kitchen, dining, living room area, and then we have our two decks. The reason we are here for the use permit application is for this extra three feet of deck. Per code, that extra three feet requires a use permit. Without the use permit being approved, they would still be permitted to build up to this point in line with the lower deck. I also have the story polls you can see showing a bit of the view of what the scale of the proposed addition will look like. Our west rear elevation. So this is the section which faces on to another residence down on Darwin. This will be the one that has the largest privacy concerns regarding the deck. It is a bit of an issue with the second story regarding privacy, but everything that is proposed is within code is allowed, except of course, that deck projection, but all the heights setback requirements for the second story are consistent. The applicant was cautious in ensuring that they slanted the roof to allow a little bit more of a view, an extra extra two and a half feet of view for residences that are further up along the grade. We have a few different views of the story polls, in case anyone didn't have a chance to get out to look from further distances. The one over here on the right with the bird is down from Darwin. And then this is from the corner of Durant Park, so it is mostly a photo looking directly at the frontage, difficult to get because the the other houses there. Our south elevation, this is the the section that is facing Wanda Avenue. The existing lower portion here is predominantly the same. The roof slope will be changing. And then all of this above is the new addition. So these are the only two new windows on this side. It should be noted that this side of the house actually lines up with the other side of this house down here, so it they don't look into their rear yard. Here we have our frontage. So the overall height of the structure is 24 feet, but that is from the rear grade where it drops down from the front. We are looking at 17 feet, three inches for this this lower corner of the roof. Up here, we are at 20 feet. At this point, right here, it is 12, and then we drop down to 11 over here at the very left corner. So it is keeping a fairly low profile for a second story due to the topography changes. And so the the height is really on the other side, so it is still consistent under 24 feet. And then we have a view again of the story polls showing how that will look, expanding out the garage, making room for that second car. Materials. So the applicant is looking to paint with a Benjamin Moore Himalayan truck. The edges of the roof fascia and beams will be painted dub winged. They're planning to use Milgard trinsic windows. And they're also intending on using cedar siding as well as a cedar door for the garage to match the house. The decking will be constructed of redwood decking with stainless steel cables. And I, there's a lovely house that is just on my way home, which happens to have a very similar color scheme and with the cedar paneling. So this is not what is proposed, but I thought it was a good representation of the type of color scheme they're going for. That is along Yosemite, if anyone's curious. So that sums up Board of Architectural Review. I'm going to continue on to the use permit, discuss those issues. Sorry?
I got a question for you, Dana.
Of course.
Is is that cedar siding going all the way around the garage or just in the front?
So the cedar siding. If I go back up to, it does go around the sides of the garage. So here we are on the north elevation, so it will wrap around from the front here. So this is the where the garage is and will wrap around the side. And along.
Okay, so it only has partial then just to the windows?
Correct. Yes, it's not, it's not the entire entire length all the way up.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to move on to the use permit section. So this is specifically for the deck projecting into the rear yard setback. Per Seaside Municipal Code, Table 35, which is allowed architectural projections into setbacks. In a footnote, projections of more than three feet into the front or rear setback are subject to use permit approval by the planning commission. Here we have a little bit more in-depth view of our decks. So this is the second story. The deck will be here projecting into the rear yard. As you can see, it extends out over the bottom deck. And per code, they would be allowed to go to this 12 foot setback. This is a setback that will be 12 feet from the rear property line. What they are asking for is for an additional two and a half feet to go nine to go within nine feet, six inches of the rear property line. So without this use permit being approved, this deck would still be approvable, except it would be cut back to just this dimension. Here are some pictures I managed to get from the deck. So this red beam across here is the the base of the deck. So this is the view into the property immediately west to the rear. This is the one we have the the biggest concerns due to privacy. It does allow them to essentially look into their rear yard. The benefit is that because the applicant has chosen to put this new addition over the garage, it lines up with the with the house behind it with their garage. So rather than looking right into their actual house, we do look into this. I think it's a catchment pond or a pool. And then there are also some concerns, this property here to the south along Wanda. Due to the height, there could be some view issues into their deck as well or into their rear yard as well. However, the setback is much greater. 15 feet as opposed to this current configuration, which is nine and a half feet to that rear property line. So staff is recommending approval of BAR application 2010 for the second story addition, deck and materials subject to the attached resolutions, project plans and material specifications. Staff also recommends approval of the use permit for the second story jack projection deck projection into the rear yard setback of five feet, six inches subject to the attached resolution plans and material specification. This is based on the residential addition has been designed to respect the existing residential patterns and scale of the neighborhood. This design provides breaks in the facade plane and creates visual depth. The proposed project adheres to all setbacks and development regulations, barring, of course, the second story deck projection, which will be subject to the use permit approval. If the use permit is not approved, the project would be subject to the standard three foot projection, which is permitted for secondary decks by city code. The addition has been designed to be consistent in quality, scale and architectural relationship with the site. And there are no significant visual impacts to the adjacent properties. Properties uphill of the project sit at a grade of 220 feet, while the subject site sits at a grade of 214. Due to this grade differential, staff finds the proposed second story addition and second story deck will not significantly impact the view shed of its adjacent properties. The proposed project will help to improve the physical appearance and character of the existing residential neighborhood. For the use permit, the land use classifications of the subject property is intended for detached, single family residential units, including decks. The placement of an exterior desk on the western elevation, the rear yard of a two story, single family residence will not detract from the character of the neighborhood. The deck would be set back from the side property lines and would be screened from the public view from Vallejo by the new second story addition. The second story deck has a nine foot, six inch setback from the rear property line. A setback of 12 feet would be allowed per code without need for a use permit. Access to the deck on the second story would be provided from the second story due to internally from the living, dining, kitchen room area. The second story deck is an accessory use to the main dwelling and therefore does not alter the operating characteristics of the dwelling or enjoyment of the properties. And that is all I have. Please let me know if you have questions.
Commissioners, anybody have questions for her?
I had a couple of questions, Chair.
Okay, you have the floor.
Dana, what, it's kind of a silly question, but on one of those slides, you were showing a picture with a round pool or something from the air. Can we go back to that?
Yes.
So that is I'm looking at Google Maps and that's not on that, so I was confused. So that may be like a small inflatable or something, maybe?
It could be. I honestly don't know.
Well, it could make a difference if it was a hot tub or something like that from a deck standpoint. I was just curious about that. The other thing is if I understood you correctly, you know, they want to go an extra, I think you said five feet out.
Two and a half feet.
Two and a half feet, excuse me. So the two and a half feet. I realize you haven't stood on the same elevation and looked down, but is that two and a half feet going to make any qualitative difference between looking into that backyard, whether it's built to the current specs with with use permit or not getting this use permit and and having to go with what can be permitted without going through that process?
I, in all honesty, don't know if two and a half feet would would make a difference. I I feel someone who's up at that height would be able to see over anyways. And even without the use permit, they would still have someone hovering over over them. That's that's where I get hung up.
Anything else, Commissioners? Is, did that answer your question, Mr. Evans? Okay. Anything else, Mr. Silva?
Yeah, so I I noticed the some of the public comments we received, they said the address that they were writing from. And most of the ones that I saw that were writing an objection to the project were actually not on the street at all. They were one street higher, so they actually are, I think, greater than the 220 foot elevation that you that you showed. Do we have an objection from the two neighbors that are closest below and to the left of this house where you expressed, you know, that those would be the biggest concerns?
Um, I do know that two, two comments that we received were from 1292 and 1297 Luzern. So if you look on the screen at the moment, I did go and take photos from these houses, not that I could get into their backyard, but if you see the yellow dots, that's where these photos were taken from, where you can see the second story poles through the gaps of the houses to get kind of a feel of how that is going to impact their view. The the main thing about these houses down on Vallejo is most of their view to the water is actually northwest rather than directly south. So especially this house on Vallejo here, they still predominantly keep their view going this direction. I don't know if we received any comments from the house on the corner of Vallejo and Wanda. I didn't see any specific address that called out that one.
Okay, so so that kind of confirms what I thought. When I did my site visit, I noticed that as well. The the two larger houses on Vallejo that are across from the park, they'll still have their views. That one house that you mentioned that's directly across, it it's a single story house. It already doesn't have views because the house is across the street, plus it only has two tiny windows on the front of the house. So
Correct.
So we we've we've got two objections that that at least have identified their address. They're an entire street up. And then the one person with the 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 round circular thing in their yard, it's going to to potentially have the sort of the most impact on their privacy, that that party has not objected or made a negative public comment, or do we know?
As as far as I know, no, I do know that the property owner, I'm sure him or the architect will speak, went out and contacted their neighbors to let them know what was going to be happening. And I I I did not see that anyone from Darwin had sent in any comments.
Okay, and then last question I've got for you, the 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 deck, the balcony that is upstairs, if I'm reading the plans correctly, the entire balcony is only about six feet deep. So we're not talking about a big balcony and there is no staircase to it. I know in the past, some of the concerns of this commission was that the balcony was super big and was going to sort of invite, you know, a a party or it had the stairs that go up and down. So we don't have that, I believe, even with the the additional two and a half feet, we're only looking at a six foot balcony. Is that correct?
I believe it is an eight foot balcony. Yes, it's it's an eight foot deck.
Oh, you know what I'm seeing? Okay, it's an eight foot deck, so you're showing the E, the overhang that's hanging past the roof.
Yes.
Okay, so about six feet of it goes past the existing structure.
Correct. And then without it, it would be down without, correct.
Got it. Perfect. All right, that answers my questions. Thank you very much.
Of course.
Commissioners? Can I take a, can I see what the front of what the deck looks like if you're saying the guy from Darwin? See, I don't have these. That's why I'm having to ask for them because I I've gone back to mine and I only get the two pictures.
So this is, this is from Darwin and from just the side of, right here is Darwin's side property line.
Gotcha. And this is the eight foot wide deck, right?
Yes, this this right here is that eight foot deck projecting into the yard.
How long is it?
It is 19 feet long. So it's the it's the entire width of what they're going to be constructing.
And
of the new construction.
What is behind the 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 slider doors that are in that area?
This, oh, you you mean the little metal right here?
What, no, where where the upper deck is and the the glass doors that go out to it? What's right behind that? Is that a bedroom or?
No, this is, the the upper story is an open concept living and dining room, so that will be the living and dining area. I'm assuming the living room will be the closest towards the view and then dining will be in the middle and then, of course, kitchen here along the eastern frontage.
Very good. Thank you.
Of course.
Anything else for staff? Seeing nothing else for staff, we'll open it up to the applicant.
And Dana, did you confirm that the applicant speaking was Mr. Cullen? Is that correct?
So Carrie Carrie Jones and then Miss Casey Cullen would be the architect.
Okay. Uh, either one of you, if you would like to speak, please raise your hand. I'll unmute you and you can I'll allow you to speak and you can unmute yourself if you'd like to respond.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hi, this is Carrie Jones, the applicant. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, so thank you for the opportunity to submit this and I look for, I would really like to have this passed off and I think that it would make a great addition, you know, for us and for the neighborhood too. And ju- just to back up a minute, you guys are worried about the view in the backyard. That was a portable pool. So the the renters that were living there no longer live there and the pool is gone. Second of all, the I can see in the the people's backyard the way it is right now, even through the windows. But if I had a deck sitting inside the house or even back toward the house, you know, you you can't, you have to go all the way over to the edge of the deck to look down. So the whole purpose of the deck is is making it a little wider so I I can, you know, put put a chair and maybe even a table up there and, you know, have dinner or something like that outside. Are you guys still there?
Yeah, we're listening to you.
Okay. Uh, other than that, Casey's done a wonderful job of drawing this up and and working with me to get as much space out of it I can and and try to keep the get as much space out of it I can and try to keep the, the view, the, the heights down so that the neighbors, it wouldn't impact the neighbors. And every, the neighbors that I've talked with, everybody's happy with the idea and would, it would upgrade the neighborhood.
Very good.
That's all I have to say.
Commissioners, anything for the applicant? Seeing nobody, we'll go ahead and go to your architect.
Ms. Cullen, if you can unmute yourself and make any comments you'd like.
Hello?
Hello.
Hello, this is Casey Cullen.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to reiterate what Carrie was saying. From the inside of the single-story house, you are looking into the downhill neighbor's yard already. And I think that what he was trying to say is that the deck actually provides some privacy between the upper-story windows and the backyard of the lower house.
Anything else, Casey?
No, if you don't have any questions for me, I think that's all.
Oh, well, we'll see if we got questions coming up here. Commissioners, anything for the architect? Go ahead, Mr. Silva. Nothing. I have one question.
You expected me to say something?
Yes.
I don't have any more questions.
Danny, anything from you? The only thing that I got is coming from the Board of Architecture. I'd sure like to see you wrap the garage with that cedar instead of stopping at each window that way.
I'm, I'm not sure I understand your question. You mentioned that before.
Yeah, at the side of the park.
Yes.
Where you kind of come around the corner, maybe, I don't know, four, six, eight feet.
Oh, oh, right. And you mean continue it all the way across?
Correct.
Well, I mean, I, I was putting the cedar siding on to try to reduce the bulk of the second floor. You know, by using the two materials.
No, no, I like that.
I suppose it could...
The park, that's what I was thinking it would look like.
I guess, I guess my feeling was that that elevation has so few windows, it has no windows on the first floor.
Right on the ground.
And there's a fence pretty close. So, I mean, actually, that, actually, if you look at the photograph that Dana has up right now, that you can see the, the wood fence, which goes up to at least six feet, I think. So you're, you're never going to see that stuff go part of the elevation going down to the ground anyway.
Right.
And I think if we continued the cedar for the entire length, it would become a large rectangle of cedar. And this way, it actually breaks it up.
Right. Okay. Anything else? Anybody else have anything for the architect? We will open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to speak on this matter can come and do so. Two-minute time. Leslie?
All right, through the chair, we no longer have anyone participating on the webinar, but I did. I would like to note for the record, we received six public comments that have been emailed to the commissions. The commissioners have seen those. I'll read the names of them, but I won't read the items themselves. One was from Amy Garcia, one from Elena Hernandez, one from Millie Granados, one from Ramon Granados, and one from Adriana Olivera. So for the record, the commission has received all of those emails prior to the meeting or right at the start of the meeting for consideration. But there's no one participating on the webinar right now, and I haven't received any other emails. Let me double check one more time. I haven't received any additional public comments during the meeting.
Very good. Okay. Public comment is closed. We will bring it back to the Commissioners.
You want to call on us in some order?
Mr. Silva, let's give it, go ahead, since you're on the screen.
You know, I always have something to say. Well, first of all, I just, I want to compliment the architect frankly on this one. I think given, well, first of all, the disrepair of the existing house, it's going to be so refreshing to see this upgraded in any regard. It's going to, you know, beautify the community. I'm very pleased with that. I also, I see that this was a very challenging site. It's a small lot, very small existing house. And I think that the architect did a really marvelous job of managing the space and getting the most out of the space that they could. And I think that the upside-down floor plan really works to maximize the views and to keep keep the spaces balanced without a big second-story element. We have dealt with a lot of these second stories and, you know, our instructions have been that, that, the encouragement is for the second story to not take up the full facade. And what they've done here again is they've only gone up in, in one side of the house. They've left the other part open. It's the side that overlooks the park, so it's minimized the impact to neighbors in a lot of ways. And I think they honored, you know, the simple forms of the existing house and actually created kind of a really cool contemporary design with, with that vernacular. So all of that, to be said, I think, I think the design is great. I think that I would have greater concern if the, if the most impacted neighbor right below them were objecting, but they're not. And the fact that none of the neighbors on their own street are objecting, that's incredibly encouraging. I think that that's great news. The people who are objecting are two houses above, one street above, and they are at a much higher elevation and they have the ability to go up as well and do something similar in the future. And so, I mean, I don't see any objection whatsoever in my mind to what is being done here. I understood the chair's question about maybe continuing the cedar because that's such a nice element. But I do think it might get lost behind the fence and on that side that is only seen by the park. And I recognize the architect's answer of kind of creating that blocking to break up the mass on that one side. So I, I mean, I'm very satisfied with all the answers and I'm personally okay with the additional deck space because I think that that deck does, in fact, as they describe, obscure some of the vision between the windows and that yard as well. So I, I mean, I think there's really good design solutions here. So that's, that's everything I have to say.
Very good. Danny, you want to go next?
Sure. I, I agree with Commissioner Silva. I like the modern design. It's very pretty nice. So, and my concern was the deck, you know, the two and a half feet, the extra two and a half feet, but to me, it doesn't make that difference. It's, you know, it's two and a half feet. If it was like five feet or something, it might. And also, there was no, to let the, the house behind, there was no letter from them or no, we call it, opposing this structure. So I'm off word. I agree with Commissioner Silva on this.
Very good. Commissioner Evans?
Yeah, my notes pretty much track with what Commissioner Silva and Commissioner Quinn said. I, I want to really compliment Casey on a wonderful design. When I first went up there and looked at that lot, I wondered, I really hadn't looked at the plans much. I just wanted to get a feel for what was going on. And then when I came back and looked at the plans, I, I thought, wow, somebody really put a lot of thought and effort into this. So kudos to Casey and kudos to Carrie for wanting to invest in that lot. I mean, that took a lot of vision to see what some potential would be on that site. I certainly wouldn't have had that kind of vision there. I think the Lucerne concerns, Lucerne concerns, sorry about that. The, the concerns of the citizens up on Lucerne, I, I went up there, I looked at both those streets and maybe I just can't see what they're seeing, but I feel very comfortable that they're still going to have some views. They're still going to have some enjoyment from where they are. I was interested to see about who was going to speak up on Vallejo. And my thought, even the one straight across the street, there, there's power lines, there's all sorts of stuff obscuring it. And I don't know that that second story is going to make much difference, especially when they've got that northwest view through the park. In fact, all those homes along there have views to the sides or even over and above parts of this addition. I, I really think that that little avenue of Vallejo is going to be really enhanced by this project. I'm very pleased to see what we've got. I, I understand that once again, we're kind of in that Solomonic balancing act of trying to figure out the difference between the city's desire to maintain views and the fact that legally, there isn't any right to a view. So we're trying to balance that out and make it all work. And I think the architect and planning committee, planning department have done a wonderful job putting all that together. I, I realize there's no accounting for my taste, so I'm just going to say that when I looked at that design and I saw the cedar wasn't wrapped all the way around, I really liked it because it broke up that side so that we had at least a couple of materials across there. So I would be more in favor of maintaining the current plan than I would be wrapping it all the way. I think that's all I have.
Very good. Commissioner LaMica?
I have to agree with all the commissioners. I mean, the architect and the owner did a wonderful job. And all the things I was concerned with has already been answered. And yeah, that's all I have to say. I'm for the project.
Thank you. Vice Chair Spalletta?
Yeah, I'm with all the commissioners as well. I walked around that area extensively to see if there's going to be any concern with the views. It's such a sweeping view from different angles that I really didn't see any issues on Vallejo, although I did think that there may be a privacy issue with the people directly behind. But since there was nothing, no, no concerns arose and and I forget who was that mentioned that even at the single story, there's that straight shot to the backyard anyway. And when you figure at that low level, you're, you're more in line with that window. The, the second-story deck and the little extension would, I, I think it's negligible. It's to the side, closer to the park. It protects the view, the privacy for the other neighbors to the other side of the house on that end. It's a great design. I love this style. I love the fact that it's going to bring up the value of the of the neighborhood. And I think it's a very positive move. So I'm for this.
Thank you. Okay. As you know, I'm usually opposed to a deck that starts going off close to somebody's. And I was shocked because I, I walked the site also all over and walked onto the Darcy and got in front of it to look to see what it was. And my only concern with those is that the bigger the deck, the more people, especially when it's attached to the living room like that. It opens up and and it's the, it's the noise more than anything. When you're up that high, it comes right down on the people that are there. But since the man from whoever owns the Darcy, man or woman, didn't complain about it, I have no problem with it. Like you said, I, I walked on the upper streets. The views are, like you say, to the north, northwest, through, through the park mainly. And most of them, it seemed, was already blocked anyways. When, when you walked right in front of the house and to the side of the house. So again, I have no problem with it. If the man on Darcy doesn't, then I'm good with it. So with that said, Commissioners, do we have a motion on the BAR? Let's do the BAR, or is it all of one? Dana, is this all one? I know it's two different...
It is in one resolution, but they are two, two separate applications. So you can do them as two separate ones, I think would be best.
Okay, let me get this correct here first. Sorry, guys. Got two, two lines here. Okay, we'll go for, do we have a motion on BAR 20-10 use for the, for the lost it, 1289 Vallejo Street project?
I'm happy to move that, that we approve resolution. It's 20-XX for the BAR-20-10 for the approval of the Architectural Review Application Bar 20-10 to allow for a second-story addition, including a deck and expansion of the first floor.
Very good. Do I have a second?
I second.
Who was that?
Me.
I saw, I saw Danny move towards the screen and I eyesight so bad, I couldn't tell who said it. But we have a second from Mr. LaMica, all in favor? Oh, oh, hold on here. I think we have to take this independent vote on this.
Yes, we should do a roll call vote. So Commissioner Winn?
Aye.
Commissioner LaMica?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Aye.
Chair Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Now we will look at, hold on here, UP 20-08 use permit for the, the extension of the deck for two foot six inches into the, into the zone. Do we have somebody that will make a motion on UP 20-08 use permit allowing the deck to encroach into the zone?
Why don't I do it since I've got it open again right here already and I already wrestled through the first one? I, I make a motion that we approve use permit, UP-20-08 approving the use permit to allow the second-story deck to project five feet six inches into the required rear yard as permitted by SMC 17.30.100.e at 1289 Vallejo Street in the Single Family Residential RS 12 zoning district.
Very good. Can I get a second?
I second.
Very good.
LaMica seconds again.
Okay, so we'll have a roll call vote?
Commissioner Winn?
Aye.
Commissioner LaMica?
Aye.
Commissioner Silva?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Vice Chair Spalletta?
Aye.
Chair Owens?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Very good. A appeal may be submitted in writing within seven calendar days from the date of this meeting. It shall be required, it shall be, have the required filing fees to the city. I still need to get a copy of that, Leslie. I'm sorry. I kind of butchered it.
You got it. Ensign City Hall is now open to the public, but we're still requesting that people submit things electronically. They can find an electronic appeal form. They can actually pay their fees online through our website.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. We are now, reports from Commissioners. Anything, Commissioners? Okay, seeing nothing, reports from staff.
Good evening. This is Gloria Stern, Community Development Director. I have two quick things. First of all, I just want to say thank you to all of you. I like seeing how you're all taking the time to work together as planning commissioners and make these decisions. I really think this group is gelling and I'm really pleased with how you, how you made this decision tonight. And then second of all, I'd like to put our Assistant City Manager on the spot so that way she can do a shameless promotion for the census, which is about to be ending. So if you have fan clubs out there for the Planning Commission, I would like them to hear about the census as we're in the final days of everybody being counted. So Leslie, take it away.
Here we go. Thanks so much for that, Gloria. Actually is ending on September 30th and I am really pleased to report that we have already exceeded our 2010 and 2000 response categories already. This sub-response period is the highest that it's ever been before, which is fantastic. And every response means more dollars for our city, more dollars for community-based programs for our city. So anyone that you know, there are a few days left. It's supposed to end on September 30th to count as many people as possible. The lowest responding neighborhood that we have is actually the neighborhood near City Hall and Harcourt, Del Monte, and to Fremont, all the way to Broadly is our lowest responding neighborhood. So if you know anybody who lives in that neighborhood, please encourage them to fill out the census. It takes less than five minutes and it makes such an impact to our, our entire region for the next 10 years. So my2020census.org.gov, my2020census.gov.
Eric, can I, can I ask a question of Leslie?
Of course.
Absolutely.
With superior numbers to 2010, do you have your finger on the pulse of why that might be that we've, we've done better? And that's first question. Second question, what's wrong with the people that are behind?
There's a variety of reasons. So we've done a significant amount of outreach, specifically in our community over the last few months because we know that our population tends to be a little bit nervous about government intervention. And so we've been trying to reach out to them, showing them that the, the census is confidential under Title 13 of the Constitution. The information cannot be shared. They cannot use it against you for any kind of purposes. They even, it's just, it's just very disconcerting for people to put their names and their children's names and their addresses and things like that if they do not trust government. So we've actually worked really hard over the last six months and over the last, actually, our staff has been working for the last several years to try to increase the community engagement locally. So whether you don't trust the federal government, your local government is here for you, the state government can be here for you and we can benefit you. We provide those services directly regardless of any category. If you live in our community, you are our resident and we want to serve you. So.
So how, how did that message get out so effectively though? I mean, it's one thing to say that, it's another to pull that off.
You know, the one strategy that we used was trusted messenger. So we can put it on social media all day. We can put it on the television. We can send mailers to people's homes. But what we did was activate community organizations that work directly with the people. So we got our local churches involved. We got a lot of our, our, just our local social clubs involved. We reached out to them. I mean, I can say all day, hey, trust me, I'm the government, but that doesn't really work. So we were able to reach out to any local leaders and community-based organizations to say, hey, tell your people the benefit of this, that they hear it from you, maybe they'll listen more. And I think that message has finally gotten across.
Very good.
Oh, thank you everyone for filling it out and please share the message. We have seven more day, eight more days.
Very good. I have one quick question. The people doing all the roadwork and stuff throughout Seaside, where are they out of?
Which one specifically? Because we have our rehabilitation road projects and we also have a lot of sewer maintenance projects happening. So I think the one on Del Monte Avenue, that's a sewer maintenance project. The ones on Canyon Del Ray or Sewer, everyone else is a rehabilitation. Which one are you referring to?
The rehabilitation.
I think they're local, actually. They went through a competitive process and I think they had a mandatory local requirement. I can look it up and share which company it is for you.
Yeah, and the tech, it's that tech, something or other company, but I was just wondering where they were out of. I see them when we walk every day, so.
Okay, I'll find out and send you the information.
Perfect. Thank you. Anything else for staff commissioners?
Yeah, I got one for Leslie. The question I have, the question I have, is any of the alleyways going to be paved over?
If I recall from the map, no, I think it was just, we had two very specific phases of road improvements. I don't, I don't think alleyways were included.
Because I know. Yeah, well, there's one, there's one alleyway that has San Lucas up to Notchabueina, because I know several, and I also think Hamilton, because I know several property have their garages on the alley side. And there's some big major potholes.
Okay. Okay, so I'll, I'll make a note of that and have someone go check that out. One thing I would also like to encourage is we do have an app that you can download. It's like a fix it app.
That's see click fix?
The see click fix. Yes. And if you report it, you're, if you're actually standing right there, you can snap a picture of it and say, hey, here's a really bad public safety issue. Here's a pothole and it'll go in the queue and it'll be prioritized according to the, the depth of the public safety of it. But that's one way that we've actually been able to track all of our work orders instead of going to whoever's calling today and trying to keep some sort of list on a spreadsheet. So it's been a very effective tool. Encourage people to use the see click fix app. You can do enforcement complaints too.
Yeah, I noticed that they're doing a lot of some sidewalk areas, but I don't know what creates it in our town, but the, some of the sidewalks are up like this. All of a sudden they just push up. And are they going to be fixing all of those? There's a nice big one on San Pablo, one on, on Broadway, right before Moscow.
So yes, we are.
That are just really sloping.
There are some pretty significant ones. Last year, the city council allocated a certain dollar value of money towards sidewalks. This year, I think they did, but a little bit less. Sidewalks are a big issue. We've actually categorized and documented all of the sidewalk issues in the city. Those that can be shaved down. We've gone through and done, we did a huge, I think we did a couple hundred of those within the last six months. Those that require a full rebuild or curb and gutter as well, those are being prioritized and then as much cost when money becomes available, then those will be addressed.
Leslie, one last, oh, go ahead, Chair.
Do they know what causes that to make them pyramid up like that? It even did it on General Gym and then they fixed that sidewalk.
I know our engineers have a really good answer. I know in certain areas, tree roots, tree roots definitely impact it. In a lot of locations, I knew in the Seaside Highlands area, definitely tree roots are the, are the factor there, but it can be a variety of things, is my understanding.
Okay, it's just one of those things that make you go, hmm.
What, one last request, Leslie, before you shut us off, could I just steal 30 seconds of your time at the end?
Absolutely. You bet.
Thanks.
Okay, guys, nothing else? Do I got a motion for close?
I make a motion to close.
Do I have a second?
Aye.
Okay, we got a second. All favor, aye?
Aye.
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 Then none, good deal. All right, guys, have a good week.
You too, thank you.
Thank you everyone. We'll see you next month.
Oh, do you, I still need to sign the last meeting's papers too.
Yeah, so I'll have them ready anytime tomorrow, after Monday, Friday would be great.
Maybe Monday.
Monday would be great.
I'll give you a call.
All right, sounds good.
Thank you. Bye.